I would like to call to order the October 18th, 2021 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Welcome everyone. It's good to have you with us tonight. This Board of Commissioners meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 22, also on Cabarrus County YouTube channel and on the Cabarrus County website. If you would like to participate during informal public comments, please email your name, address, and telephone number to publiccomment@cabarruscounty.us, or you can call 980-729-7942 and enter the meeting with the PIN number 49020524 followed by the pound sign. And I'll give that number again. It's 980-729-7942 and the PIN number is 49020524 followed by the pound sign. As I said earlier, it's good to have everyone with us tonight. We are very pleased to have with us Pastor Bob Page from Emmanuel Baptist Church to bring our invocation tonight. Welcome Pastor Page.
Thank you, thank you. I'm a very church chaplain, Emmanuel Baptist, but still a pastor here in the area. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Thank you for each person that's in attendance to Cabarrus Commission Meeting, Father. We pray, Father God, that you would guide one, our Chairman Steve Morris, and each Commissioner, Father, as they make important decisions for our county tonight, Father. We pray, Lord God, for all those who are battling COVID across our county and this state, nation, and this world, Father, that you would touch and heal them as only you can. Father God, we just pray that the words of our mouth, meditation of our heart, will be acceptable in your sight. Father, we love you, we praise you. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus. And all God's people said, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Page. Once again, we appreciate you being with us tonight. It has been a sad couple of weeks for us as we have lost a number of members of our Cabarrus County family of employees. And we want to observe a moment of silence in just a moment. I ask you to remember the families of all these employees that have left us over the past few weeks. Todd Culp, Todd was our Chief Building Inspector. Jessica Hilly, Jessica worked in the Transportation Department at Human Services. Jennifer Runyon, who was also a valued employee in the Human Services Department. Bobby Smith, our Emergency Management Director, who recently retired, also passed away, as well as Louis Williams, who were many years our Veteran Services Director, he also passed away. And one other that was part of our Cabarrus County family but didn't work for Cabarrus County, and that was Roger McDaniel. Roger worked for Roanne Cabarrus Community College. He was the Director of EMS and Fire Programs for 32 years there. And so he was trained many of our EMS and first responders, and certainly we grieve with them in his loss. So if you would please join me for a moment of silence in memory of and honoring these employees Thank you all. We appreciate all the contributions of these people. We will miss them, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with their families as they go forward. First up on our agenda is the approval or correction of our minutes, and you all have a copy of those before you. So at this time, do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented?
I move.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Schu. Is there any discussion? I'm hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. I have not seen Commissioner Strang join us tonight. She may be joining us a little later, but I will take that into account in our vote count. Next up is the approval of our agenda. And so at this time, do I hear a motion to approve the meeting agenda, including the changes on page 40?
I move.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Keiger, a second by Commissioner Schu. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Next up are our recognitions and presentations. And first up, we have a Red Ribbon Week 2021 proclamation, and we are delighted to have John Henderson with us for that presentation. I hope we have John Henderson with us.
I'm here, sir.
All right, thank you.
We also have Young Marine Sergeant Victoria Gassick here in attendance as well.
Welcome. The floor is yours, sir.
We appreciate y'all's continued support for the Mecklenburg County Young Marines on getting out the message for the dangers of illicit drug use. Our unit last year did 480 hours of drug demand reduction work within the unit and the community. Young Marines is a youth education service program. We're a subsidiary of the Marine Corps League. Our main focus is to teach kids about the dangers of illicit drug use while learning our core values of teamwork, leadership, and discipline. At the end goal for our program is shaping and molding our future leaders for our future generations to come.
Yes, sir. And would you like to read your proclamation?
I don't have a copy in front of me, but let me see. Let me pull up the file here. Sorry for being ill-prepared.
No problem. And I'm having a little trouble pulling my agenda up here as well.
I've got the verbiage on it.
All right.
Did this year's theme for Red Ribbon Week is Drug-Free Looks Like Me? It says, whereas alcohol and drug abuses in this nation's, this nation have been reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyle, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will celebrate in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through 31, and whereas business and government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youths will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the community of, or the county of Cabarrus further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. And it says, where as resolved by the county and the members of the board.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation as proposed?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Schu and a second by Commissioner Honeycutt to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously.
If I may brag on Young Marine Sergeant Gassick, I emailed out a list of her accomplishments that she completed last year, if I got time for that.
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
I want to try to embarrass her a little bit here when I can. I've got listed out. Young Marine Sergeant Gassick, last year she participated in our National Young Marine of the Year Video Challenge, and she got real motivated about that, and she felt the need to bring extra awareness about Red Ribbon Week. So she enlisted members of our young marine program to help create a video, and I sent that out to Ms. Linker. I'm sure she has that email. If y'all like to watch the videos, you're more than welcome. Last year as well, she, or earlier this year, she participated in a CATCA program, this Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America. She was awarded a scholarship by our national headquarters to attend that. It was a week-long session of eight hours a day to learn more about the dangers of illicit drug use. And most recently, she has earned her DEA device, Drug Enforcement Agency. It's an additional device that goes on her drug demand reduction ribbon, and it's been authorized by the DEA for her additional classes that she gave online to teach people about the dangers of illicit drug use. And she also was interviewed by the DEA. They have a website called Just Think Twice, and I sent that link out as well. Y'all can read about her. And she is a student at Northwest Cabarrus High School.
Excellent. Congratulations to Marine Gassick on all of her accomplishments, and we appreciate you being with us tonight. Did you have, and if she is with us, if she'd like to say a few words, we would welcome that.
She's on there. I saw her name on the list.
Yes, sir. I'm here. I would just like to say Red Ribbon Week is a big focus in young Marines, and it's very important to all of us. And I absolutely love spreading the message every single year because I know how important it is for our community to know to live a healthy and drug-free lifestyle. And that's a message we need to share, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but throughout the entire year.
Absolutely. And we thank you for your efforts, and we're proud of your accomplishments, and appreciate you being with us tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, we move now to Item C1 from DHS, and that's Adoption Recognition Month proclamation. We're happy to have Melissa Maye with us to present that. And you are muted, Melissa.
Thank you for that. Thank you for having us. We actually have eight of our very own Cabarrus County Department of Human Services foster parents joining us today to help me read the adoption proclamation for November 2021. These eight families are not only phenomenal foster parents, but they have provided permanence for over 10 children through adoption and permanence through other means as well. And so I'm going to start off with, have Scott Wilson start us off with our proclamation.
I saw Scott earlier with us.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I was muted there. Yeah, thank y'all for having me. Whereas Cabarrus County joins the nation in recognizing the month of November as National Adoption Awareness Month.
Whereas Adoption Awareness Month gives us an opportunity to reaffirm our commitment to give every child waiting to be adopted the chance to become part of a forever family, and...
Whereas Cabarrus County recognizes that all children need love, support, security, and a place to call home.
Whereas when birth families are unable to meet the ongoing needs of children born to them, adoptions which are humane, honest, rooted, and the understanding that adoption does not erase a child's connections to the family into which they were born are the best alternative, and...
Whereas some children travel from many parts of the world to join their adopted families in Cabarrus County, North Carolina, and...
Whereas some children in Cabarrus County live away from their birth families and substitute care, and many cannot return home and need the security and nurturing that adoptive families can provide, which is especially important for the many children with special needs, and...
Whereas the many children in our local foster care program need and deserve permanent and nurturing families, and...
Whereas every child is precious and deserves a loving family of his or her own, and...
Birth parents in Cabarrus County need support and compassion, and...
Adoptive parents and families who have adopted children require and deserve community and public agency respect and support.
Whereas, and most importantly, let us pay special tribute to those special individuals, couples, and families who have opened their homes and hearts to adopted children, forming bonds of love that we call family. Do I continue? Now therefore be it resolved, oh, that we, the Board of Commissioners of Cabarrus County, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Adoption Awareness Month in Cabarrus County.
Excellent. Thank you all. That makes it so much more special to have all of you witness. We certainly appreciate the efforts that you all commit to children in Cabarrus County every day. You are truly special folks, and we appreciate what you do. Commissioners, do I hear a motion to adopt this proclamation as so well-read?
So moved.
Second.
There you go.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Keiger. Is there any discussion or comments?
No discussion on the motion, but that was a very impactful and special reading of that proclamation. And thank you to each and every one of you for participating in our meeting tonight.
Couldn't agree with Commissioner Keiger better. That was one of the most fun and exciting resolutions to hear read by participants. And again, I will echo what Commissioner Morris said. Thank you all for the difference and impact you're making in the children's lives in this community. So thank you.
I also agree with what Commissioners Honeycutt and Keiger and the Chairman have said. You know, one of the things that I've found over the years is sometimes hard to get people involved. So I appreciate you guys getting involved and taking a part in the proclamation there. And I know you do a hard job there, particularly you, Melissa. I know you've got a hard job. I, for one, appreciate it. And I thank you to all of you for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you again, Melissa. And if there are no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passed. Thank you very much. And now we move to Item C3 from Planning and Development, Weatherization Day Proclamation. And we are happy to have Kelly Sifford with us to present that proclamation.
Thank you. And that is a hard act to follow. Very good job, Melissa. So Cabarrus County has participated in the weatherization program for over 20 years. In that program, we fund energy efficiency improvements in homes of low-income families, which allows them to expend their money on food, or medicines, or other things. So each year, October 30th is Weatherization Day nationally, and we want to take a minute to propose a proclamation to the Commissioners for Weatherization Day 2021, and I will read that for you. Whether, whereas October is National Energy Awareness Month, and October 30th is designated as National Weatherization Day, and whereas the county of Cabarrus has a longstanding commitment to conserve its resources and to help low-income households through its Weatherization Assistance Program, and whereas the state of North Carolina has administered the Weatherization Assistance Program since its inception in 1976, providing a variety of state and federal resources through numerous community action agencies, housing authorities, and departments of local government that serve people in every county in the state, and whereas it is important to recognize the importance of those programs that ensure that all residents, especially those living at or below the federal poverty level, have an opportunity to live in energy-efficient, healthy, safe, and comfortable homes as provided for by the Weatherization Assistance Program. And that is proposed for October 30th.
Thank you, Kelly. Commissioners, do I hear a motion to approve the Weatherization Day proclamation as presented?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And yours is exciting, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Schu, a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. Is there any discussion? And I may have talked over you, Kelly. Were you saying something?
No, I was just thinking.
Yeah, I think it was me. I told her hers was exciting too.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And that motion passes. Thank you again, Kelly.
Thank you.
Next up, we have from Veteran Services, our Veterans Day proclamation, and we are happy to have Tony Miller with us to present that proclamation.
All right. Good evening to everyone. Veterans Day 2021, whereas America was founded on the principles of liberty, opportunity, and justice for all, and whereas America has called on her men and women in uniform to protect our national security, to preserve our rights and freedoms, and to keep our democracy safe. And whereas, through their steadfast defense of America's ideas, our service members have ensured our country still stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know the blessings of freedom. And whereas, on Veterans Day, November 11th, 2021, we recognize the men and women of our armed forces who valiantly defend these values throughout our nation's history. And whereas, we also remember and pay tribute to the American armed forces whose courage and sacrifices secures our freedom, keeps the peace, and defends our values around the world. Now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as National Veterans Day, and call upon the citizens to always remember and honor our veterans and those who continue to serve this country so willingly to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy for all, adopted this 18th day of October 2021.
Thank you, Tony. Commissioners, do I hear a motion to adopt the proclamation for Veterans Day as read?
Mr. Chairman, this is one of the motions that I always like to do annually as we celebrate Veterans Day on November the 11th. And so I would like to move that we approve this proclamation for Veterans Day. And I do that. A lot of pride in this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I please, oh, if you, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Schu, who I think is our veteran on the board, and a second by Commissioner Honeycutt. And we'll now open the floor for discussion. And Tony, please go right ahead.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and start. Welcome everyone to our virtual program that will take place on November the 11th. It'll be a virtual. It'll be shown on various different venues. It's going to be shown at the Cannonball Stadium on their monitors at 11 o'clock. It will be on the Facebook website, YouTube, and then after that, 11:30 at the Boys and Girls Club. It will be the drive-through from 11:30 to 1 o'clock on November the 11th. And I'd like to welcome everybody out and take part in to view the viewing of the virtual Veterans Day program. And thank you to everyone.
Excellent. Thank you, Tony. Commissioners, is there any other discussion?
Well, just, Mr. Chairman, not a discussion on the motion, but another comment, that we would not be here exercising self-government, which is what this board is doing, without every single veteran that's ever put on the uniform. So this is highly appropriate for us to adopt, and I'm proud to do so.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments?
No, I would just say that this has probably been the most memorable and exciting resolutions to be able to take place in in one night. So thank you to all of our veterans for what you've done for us.
Absolutely. And we certainly look forward to those events on November the 11th that Tony outlined earlier, and I'm sure that we'll have more publicity on that. And if anybody missed that, they can find that information on our Cabarrus County webpage as well. So if there's no other discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion adopting the Veterans Day proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We move now to informal public comments. If anyone would like to participate during informal public comments, and I will repeat what I said at the beginning of this meeting, you can call in to 980-7942 and use the PIN number 49020524 followed by the pound sign. I'll repeat that phone number again, 980-729-7942, and use the PIN number 49020524 followed by the pound sign. And at this time, I will call on our clerk, Lauren Linker, to give us a report of any emails or persons on the line to participate in informal public comments.
The only person I have requested phone is Mr. Wise, who is on the call with us.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Wise, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is ironic that I'm bringing this up at this meeting, especially just after what I heard about veterans. One, I'd like to thank you all for the work that you do for our county here. But I do have some big concerns that were brought to my attention this weekend, not only me, but some citizens of the town. And I'm just going to read this word for word, take it for what it's worth. My first concern is the news that was reported to me today from the Town Hall, that the Commissioners, under the suggestion of Mike Downs, have decided that the Veteran Memorial at Rob Wallace Park would be stopped in progress due to the fact that the county says we owe them $20,000 from a bill from 2017, 2018 sheriff's office contract. I was absolutely appalled, and I'm actually sick to my stomach that this would even come about, that the elected officials of my county would... about, that the elected officials of my county would hold a ransom over a veterans' memorial for the town of Midland and for the county. It seems to me this is something that has been held in waiting for some time. We have been in this undertaking for way over a year now, going through the process, and not one thing has been said about it, until we have the company on-site, ready to go with material. If the Commissioners would like to have all the facts of why the bill wasn't paid, we would be glad to meet with you to share it. Midland nor the government pays a bill just because they receive one. It must be correct and valid. The bill in question was discussed back in a time period that is not correct due to the fact that the contract was forfeited by the sheriff's office due to the staffing problem. No one pays for a service that was never rendered. The town has spent and allocated thousands of taxpayers' dollars for this memorial at this present time. Through this whole process, jumping through all the hoops the county has, and getting everything accepted, passed, not one word has been mentioned about the bill. In my opinion, this is the same old song and dance. Midland is at the bottom of the totem pole. If this is the routine, if this is the route the Commissioner is gonna take, strong arm, then I remind you that this town may have 4,500 citizens, but our community extends to three times that. And they will not be happy, they will not be happy when this is explained. One other concern I have, numerous complaints about the ISU or solar farms not in compliance with the county zoning ordinance. People assume that because of all of them being inside our city limits, they are just being stacked slack and not enforcing them. We have to say that these are not ours, this is the county's jurisdiction. The solar farm on Mount Pleasant Road looks like a jungle. All the trees and nice bushes that were required to be planted for the buffer are now a thicket due to the fact it has not been mowed or maintained since they were planted. Also, I was told that it is still in violation of not having the buffer replanted that was destroyed during construction. The solar farm on Bethel Avenue Extension, Howell property, trees are dead and has not been mowed or maintained since they were planted. I must admit that since this, we've talked about this, that part has been started to get mowed. I had our planner reach out to Brett Hicks to try and see what he can do to get it fixed. He has always been very quick to contact the town when he sees something that is under our jurisdiction. He has basically said that if he had time, he would take a look. That's been months. I encourage you both to ride these locations and look, and ask yourself, does this make me proud? In closing, I would like to ask both, please reconsider your support for our memorial, and to please get something done about the appearance of solar farms. And as I said at the beginning, I find this very ironic that you all support a veteran acclamation, but here, this is a veteran park that you're talking about holding ransom for $20,000. I'd like you to reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wise. Ms. Linker, do we have any other calls or emails that have come in for public comment?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right, thank you. Then at this time, if there are no more public comments, we will move to the consent agenda. As we state each month, items on our consent agenda are ones that we have discussed in some detail at our work session two weeks ago, and they are presented now, I think we have 16 items on our consent agenda tonight. So, at this time, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the following exception. I'd like for us to take item number, I think it's F12, from Asset Management, about the Midland Veterans Memorial Park, and I'd like to move that over to our new business. You know, I'll be honest, we tried to avoid having a public discussion about this, but I mean, we've got some issues that need to be resolved, and so, let's take it off of the consent agenda for tonight, add it to new business, and then we can discuss it at that time, if, you know, if the board so desires.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, moving item F12 to new business, which would be G3. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna be, I wanna ask Commissioner Shu, that, all we're doing there is, that's just an easement. I mean, that's not stopping them, I mean, we can resolve or do, if we need to have some sort of discussion, which I think on our closed session agenda, I saw that we do have a discussion coming up, but am I missing something? Why would pulling the easement, the temporary construction easement off the consent agenda, how's that going to improve or change what we're doing with the park?
Well, what it means, Blake, is we're not gonna be voting on that unless it's the board's desire to vote on it. See, we've discussed this in times past. If you remember, you got a timeline from David Goldberg, and I think that there might have been some conversations in between since then and now. And I mean, I can't speak for the other board members, I can only speak for myself, but I'm not ready to vote on this in a consent fashion, knowing that we got unresolved issues laying out there that hasn't been dealt with. And I think that we've really, truly tried very hard to resolve those issues, yet they still go unresolved, so I'm not in a position to vote on it at this time. I want us to discuss it, and like I said in my, in the motion to approve, we, you know, I didn't want to bring this out in an open public forum. We tried to avoid that, because to me, you know, this something should have been taken care of three and a half, four years ago, yet it's still laying out there unresolved, and there's deeper issues to it. So, I just wanna see it either, you know, put it on for discussion, and if we don't wanna do that, we'll table it till our first meeting in November. Whichever the board decides to do is fine.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor that has not been seconded. And now, if we do second the motion, then this item will be moved to new business for discussion there.
I'll second it, to move it and have the discussion, so that we can get to where we need to be.
Okay, all right. We do have a motion and a second, and the floor is now open for any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda with the moving item F12 to new business, G3.
I am totally fine with moving it. I don't have any objection. Anytime a Commissioner wants to pull something off consent, that is perfectly fine. I just, it's a construction easement. I'm, I guess I'm not sure how that ties into the overall. We grant that easement, but we can discuss that, we will have a discussion about that, so.
Excellent. Okay, any other discussion?
Can we move this to our work session, the first meeting of November, and get not, you know, so that I can learn a little bit more information, since this was prior to my time, and get up to date on this situation?
We can certainly have that discussion. If it gets moved to new business, we can take whatever action the board would approve at that time.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, currently, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Shu, seconded by Commissioner Honeycutt, to approve the consent agenda with the change, moving item F12 to new business for tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Okay, that motion passes, and we move now to new business. First item is G1, and that is Cabarrus County Mortgage Assistance Program. And we are happy to have Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris with us to talk about that item.
Good evening. If you could just confirm, you can see the presentation?
Yes, sir, I can.
So, this is a tag along to our American Rescue Plan discussion, where you approved our preliminary spending plan. And as part of that, we allocated funding for a mortgage assistance program to be administered by Prosperity Unlimited on our behalf. And so, we're happy to announce tonight the launch of that program tomorrow. At 5:00 PM, we will launch the application process, and I'm gonna walk through the preliminary guidelines for that program. So, as I said, this is our first program that is aimed at homeowners. And so, as you know, we have the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that is aimed at helping tenants and landlords. And so, this program will be directed at homeowners that are low to moderate income. And the ability to sustain future payments will be a part of this, so we wanna make sure that any support that is provided is for someone that can stay in their home. And then, this would be for up to $35,000 of assistance to get current on their mortgage. So, this just goes over the income requirements. So, for this particular program, it would be at or below the 80% of area median income. And so, this slide shows you what that equates to. So, for a family of four, that would be $67,350. So, that amount or less, and they would be eligible for this particular program. I did wanna cover this briefly, because this is one thing that's a little bit different with this program, and it's common with housing assistance programs that are generally launched. And that is a repayment process. And so, the goal of this program is to keep people in their homes. And so, as you can see from this slide, this is set up to where it is a repayable loan that goes down over the course of ten years. So, within the first five years, they would have to repay any amount provided, and then it goes down by 20% per year from year six to 10. And this, again, is an incentive to keep them in their home. And the triggering event is for primarily a sale or transfer of that property, is where that repayment kicks in. And so, I thought it would be better to sort of illustrate that in numbers, because it's a little hard to follow. And so, this is an example where if the grant was awarded at $10,000, if they sold that home within the first five years, they would repay that $10,000 grant to the county. If they sold it in year six, it would go down 20%, and their repayment obligation would be $8,000. If they held it until the eighth year, that would go down another 40%, so they would owe $4,000. And then, if they held the home for beyond that 10-year mark, is when they would have a forgiven loan, and they would no longer have a repayment obligation to the county. And so, again, this is to encourage them to stay in their home and to sustain that homeownership. I think a common question with this is what happens if they don't have enough equity to repay? And that is a decision for the board. So, that can be either forgiven, or you can take sort of the amount that is available, and then forgive the rest. And so, we have some options there when it comes to that. And so, as I said at the beginning, this will launch tomorrow at 5:00 PM, and it will stay open for a month, and so, it will close on November 19th at 5:00 PM. And then, the website is listed there, where folks can go to get more information, and that will launch tomorrow, and that is cabarruscounty.us/mortgage-assistance-program. And so, that is my presentation, and I could take any questions that you have.
Okay, Commissioners, questions for Rodney? I guess the one question that I would ask is, when you go to the website, I'm assuming it goes into more details about the rules and regulations, or, I mean, are there more details? That seems pretty simple.
And as Kasia can attest, there is a rather lengthy website that we're trying to edit down to the true requirements of what we need. But there is a lot of information, documentation, a lot of different requirements for these potential grantees.
Uh huh, great, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Rodney? Okay, we encourage people that are in need to apply for this program. This does not require a vote, and that was for informational purposes only. Thank you for that presentation. Okay, and we move now to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program staff change, and we are happy to have Karen Calhoun to talk with us about that item.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Always like to do a sound check. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to come before you this evening, and the request that I am putting forth to you tonight is regarding the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that Rodney just mentioned, similar to the Mortgage Assistance. But this is the program that we have been operating in the Department of Human Services since March. Our request is to transition Emergency Rental Assistance Program employees from employment currently paid payroll through a contracted temporary employment agency over to Cabarrus County payroll with benefits. This is designed to help us provide stability to the administration of this program and reduce turnover. We have had a number of staff turnovers with these being temporary positions since we started the program. About half of those staff have turned over, and the retraining time takes much longer. And so, that has been part of the delay in us being able to move the needle on some of the backlog of the applications and things like that. It's been incredibly challenging, as you all have heard, as we've reported out to you. The ERAP federal administrative funding that is available as part of the administration of the rental assistance and utility assistance funding under this umbrella of this program is available to cover the salary and the benefits of the nine employees that we would wanna transition over, and it actually results in an estimated savings. The approved positions would be time-limited based on the availability of the ERAP program funding, and no county funding is needed for this request. And so, I'm asking for the approval and putting a motion before you to request to approve the transition of the nine employees from Temporary Staffing Agency over to Cabarrus County payroll to include benefits as time-limited based on the availability of ERAP federal funding.
Thank you, Karen. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Karen, do you have any idea as to how long it will be before we get the ERAP fed funding?
Which funding, Commissioner Shu?
Well, the funding that's gonna fund these positions that you're speaking about.
We have a good bit of that. It's 10% of the total funding, and we already have an abundance of the administrative funding that we're not yet spending, available to use for the administration of the program, up to 10%.
Okay, well, that's good. And I wanted to do a little side note while I'm thinking about it. I took a tour last week of the Cabarrus Dream Center, and someone up there speaks very highly of you, Karen, and I concur with that. We're so fortunate to have a person such as you, and so dedicated and so committed to what you're doing. So, you know, I appreciate that, and I'm in favor of trying to get this worked out, and, you know, I'm good with it myself. Thank you for everything, Karen.
Thank you, Commissioner Shu, that's very kind. Thank you for sharing that.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the transition of nine employees from Temporary Staffing Agency to Cabarrus County payroll with benefits as time-limited based on the availability of ERAP federal funding.
And I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, we'll prove that.
Second. Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Shu, a second by Commissioner Keiger. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes. Thank you. And now, we move to item G3, which was, is from Infrastructure and Asset Management, and this is, the Town of Midland is requesting a temporary construction easement at Rob Wallace Park for the staging, access, and construction of the Town of Midland-funded Veterans Memorial.
Mr. Chairman, since I'm the one that caused all this ruckus, let me try to explain myself as to, I know I talked a little bit about it during the motion part there. But as Councilman Wise correctly stated, there was a personnel issue at that time. I remember that very well. Brad Rowley was the sheriff at that time, and I remember plainly asking him, Sheriff, how are we doing on staff? And I remember him telling me, we were 35, 36, somewhere there about short in deputies. Well, it didn't only affect meeting the need in Midland, but affected all areas. And speaking of that, you know, Concord and Kannapolis, they have their own police department as we all know. We don't fund any deputies for them. However, the county does fund two deputies for Midland. I'm not sure how many Harrisburg and Mount Pleasant gets, but we're talking about Midland. Midland has two that we pay for, and then contractually, they're supposed to pay for two as well. So they would have, if you wanted to refer to it as the Midland Division, they had four deputies there, two supplied by the county, two that they would pay for. Okay. And like I said, I didn't want to get into the details and to the numbers, but I guess the only way we're going to bring a resolution to this is just do what we're doing, to talk about it and try to iron it out. And I'll talk about why the memorial was used. It wasn't necessarily that memorial, it could have been any issue. And the reason I say that is because the good old boy gentleman's type agreement, you know, did not work. We tried that. The chairman and I went down and visited with the mayor. We thought we had it resolved. The mayor told us at that time, he said, look, he said, I'll meet with the town manager, and I will have this put in the budget for next year, which would have started July the 1st, two years ago. Well, we waited around patiently. The payment never came. So, we had the town manager, we had the mayor, we had the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, and Mike Downs and myself, we met at the governmental center. Once again, we left there thinking that it was ironed out, and it was all resolved. Come to find out, it wasn't. And after numerous letters, numerous invoices, numerous phone calls, and what it really comes down to, and this is for the benefit of my fellow Commissioners, which we've all got a timeline, all of us have got a timeline from the attorney on this. But for the viewing audience that might be watching this and are as uninformed, you know, we thought that we had this resolved several times, but to come to find out, the whole time, the town manager there, he don't think that he owes the bill. I mean, we reduced it. They said, oh, we said, okay, well, look, you saying we didn't supply you the personnel that you're supposed to have 24/7? So, what did we do? We cut the bill 25%. You got three, three and a half, two we paid for, and you paid for one and a half, and you still didn't pay that. Now, and I'm just speaking as truthful and as honest as I know how, folks, that's just the way it is. I mean, you know, I wanted to resolve this, but it looks to me like it can't be resolved until, you know, and until somebody says, yeah, you know, we need to get that bill paid. But I've offered all types of resolutions, I've offered suggestions, and, you know, there is such a thing as a budget amendment. We do them all the time. I spoke with the county manager, and speaking of the county manager, he didn't do this. He didn't do this, we did this, as, you know, we're all in this together, doing what the county put us in office for, to be protectors of the, of the good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And I understand the town manager, he wants to be prudent as well with tax dollars from the Town of Midland. I understand that. But the bill is due, it's just, and they just need to just pay it, and that's just it. You know, I told him a number of times, you just need to pay the bill, Doug. Now, let me elaborate just a little bit, and then I'm going to shut up and let y'all talk. But you say, well, you know, Councilman Wise, you say this is ironic because we're talking about veterans, you know, and we're going to do the Veterans Proclamation for November the 11th. Well, we do that every year. But, you know, I'm a veteran myself, and I'm proud of being a veteran. But it doesn't matter if it was the Veterans Memorial Park, or if it was some other issue. We had to have something to get Midland's attention to get the bill paid. And everything we done, in a gentleman-type way, we tried, and it didn't work. There was no type of acknowledgement at all, except, well, we'll get it put in our budget, and we'll pay it 1st of July. Well, that was two years ago. And so, we can't just arbitrarily, as you know, we can't just arbitrarily write things off because it's, you can't collect it or whatever. But I think it's pretty absurd, though, to have a municipality in the county that, you know, for whatever reason refuses to pay a bill that is just and is bona fide. And so anyway, that's why I wasn't ready to vote on it. It's because we got to get this ironed out. I don't want it to go any further. It's been a thorn in my flesh for all of this time, and I, quite honestly, I'm tired of dealing with it. So the only way you're going to deal with it is bring it to a head, and that's where it's at now. And once again, I did not want to see it come this far, but you push somebody in a corner, something has to give. And so this is the way I see us getting it ironed out, one way or the other. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Commissioners, are there other questions or comments on this item?
Well, I guess I'm still confused because I don't know what that issue has to do with the construction easement, allowing, well, we've been asked to provide an easement, and that was the issue on our agenda, not the police debt.
Well, Blake, Mr. Keiger, what I was trying to say is, is that we tried everything else. We didn't have any leverage whatsoever. Calling and talking to somebody and trying to get something done didn't work. But you, as you can see, this very easily got somebody's attention, which we hadn't been able to do in three and a half years.
So what got it, having an easement on our consent agenda got somebody's attention? I'm still not, I don't see the correlation between the two things.
There is no correlation, other than it's leverage, because the gentleman's type way didn't work. So this had to be, I think one of the council members even said that it was a strong arm. No, it's not strong arm. What it is, is that we're trying to get somebody's attention to pay the bill. Do you want the bill to drag off for another year and a half, two years?
No, but we're not, the bill wasn't part of our consent agenda. The bill had nothing to do with our consent agenda. The consent agenda item is a construction easement.
I understand that.
So.
I thoroughly understand, but I'm not, I'm not going to approve, I'm not going to approve. And I'm just one, there's four more of you guys. I'm not going to approve an item for, such as this, that's been lingering for three and a half, four years. While I grant one thing, they want, they want to do this, and we want them to do this, and they won't do it. But we want, they want us, in the country boy language, you know, we gotta, we gotta bend over, in other words. And that ain't the way it's supposed to be. I mean, it's Cabarrus County Park, not Midland Park. And we say who goes on the park and who don't. It's just that simple. And if we don't, you know, it ain't got nothing to do with the Vietnam, I mean, the Veterans Memorial, ain't got nothing to do with that. It could have been anything. It could have been the fireworks, or anything that we have to approve. It didn't necessarily have to.
I understand, I get you now, I've got it.
It just happens that we've tried to resolve it, Commissioner Keiger, we've tried to resolve it, we couldn't get nobody's.
No, I'm with you there. I know we've had multiple discussions about it, and it's an item on our closed session agenda tonight. And, but the other thing, I don't know, the timeline you talked about, I don't, I don't have a timeline. I don't know what.
I think Rich, I mean, well, Rich probably sent it out too, but I know David sent it out. David, are you?
I searched for his name through my email, and I didn't get it, I didn't get a hit for that.
So that was just between, that was just on our email chain that when you asked about that, Commissioner Keiger, I can get you the copy of that information briefly.
Okay.
I would just like to say.
Like, in that case, I apologize Blake for not knowing that you didn't have the timeline, because I assumed everybody got the timeline. That's been probably two weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
I also don't have it, and, you know, I don't think it's, I think it's kind of bad practice to hold somebody's project hostage while we try and still negotiate this deal. Now, obviously, I'm still, I'm new to this particular situation, and I've got minimal information on it. But I mean, I would be in favor of tabling this to, you know, to our work sessions, any discussion, you know, vote on this. I understand it's on the closed session meeting, I don't have that agenda, so I was unaware. But I would like to be able to discuss this with, you know, David, as well as the Midland attorney, and speak with Steve and Mike Downs on this, to get a little bit more guidance on this before making any other vote, and any other discussion, you know, I'd like to have a little bit more discussion on this particular topic.
Well, Commissioner Strang.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner Strang, I had talked with the mayor of Midland today, and I suggested that very thing. And I told him, the sequence of events that would have to take place on that is, our next meeting is November the 1st, which is two weeks from today. But Midland Town Council don't meet until the second Tuesday of each month, which will be the 9th of November. So what I suggested was that the mayor or town manager have a called meeting of the Midland Town Council, and let them discuss this and get it to us, something concrete, before our November 1st work session. And if that worked, if we can get that resolution, we can get something, you know, in a positive way from, from the representatives in Midland. Then, I also talked with the chairman and of our board, and he said that we could suspend the rules and vote on it on the work session, which would be two weeks from today. So we're talking about a two-week delay, but now they've had three and a half years.
Right, which I understand, and like I said, so, did the town manager say that he would entertain doing a special call meeting for this particular situation?
I think that he did say that, yeah. But he, well, he said, well, we'll just see how it goes. That's the way he left it with me. Well, he said, we'll just see how it goes. Based on the night's conversation, he did say that.
Okay. Chairman Morris, can we, can I offer a motion to table this to our next work session? And I will, upon my return in town, follow up with the town manager, as well as the town attorney, on this particular topic, to get some kind of resolve or some answers. And in the meantime, upon my return, I can speak with you, the county manager and Commissioner Shu as well, to gain a little bit more insight on this, before making an educated vote.
Okay, I think you did make that in form of a motion to table item G3 to our November 1st work session. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table item G3 to our November 1st work session. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it seems that we're getting a little out in front of our skis. If we have a closed session agenda item, then we're operating here without information that our town, our county manager and board attorney want to give us. So we're going in a different direction without an update that we're supposed to get when we go into closed session. So, I mean, I get, for that reason, I'm going to vote no. It doesn't mean that I don't want to resolve this, and it doesn't mean that I don't want to give it more time. I just, I'm going to vote no. I'm not sure what the, what the answer is, but it just feels like we've sort of gotten out of kilter in acting without having all the information that we're supposed to have. I guess tabling it doesn't hurt, but it's still feeling like we're doing this out of order.
Well, the county manager sets the closed session agenda, and we put things on there a lot of times, and then we take them off. So I'll have to ask the county manager about that. Do we need to leave it on for more information, or do we take it off?
And I would, I would discourage a great deal of discussion on closed session agenda, because that is exactly what it is, closed session.
Right, yeah, I would just add, the closed session, the regular session, all of these agendas are your agendas. So you can, at the, at the proper time, you can make those motions to amend those, to remove an item, to add an item, whatever you feel is prudent to do.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there further discussion?
Well, just, I'm sorry Diane, I know you're ready to say something, so go ahead, I do have one more question.
I was just going to say that, you know, Mike Downs is the county manager. He does, I mean, I think he's been blamed for quite a few things lately, and he very much respects the board, and knows who's supposed to make what decisions. And I don't know why people like to use him as a scapegoat as much as they do. But Mike, I would just say, sorry, but thank you for what you do, and we know how it really is. Sometimes I guess it just sounds good to say that. So, that's all I have to say there.
Did you have something else, Commissioner Keiger?
Well, just what's the alternative? If we, we go back and approve the construction easement, or disapprove the construction easement, or table that easement until the work session, till November's work session, is that the motion that's on the floor?
The motion that's on the floor is that we table the item to our work session, and then at that, if we approve that motion, then it would be at the pleasure of the board on November 1st, to discuss it further, to suspend the rules and take action on it, or to put it back on our agenda for our November regular meeting. That would be up to the board to decide how they wanted to proceed.
Okay, well, that's fine. I still, I guess I'm still a little perplexed at how a council member from Midland came to our meeting with knowledge that somehow we were going to hold back funds or do something that I'm not aware that we've had any discussion to do. And this, all of this seems, there's something out of whack. I mean, there's just something out of kilter here, and I'm not sure I'm fully grasping what has, what has taken place, but that's, that's fine. We've got a motion and a second on the floor.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. And that motion passes, and that item is tabled to our work session agenda. And so at this time, we will move to reports, and first is to receive updates from Commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities, or various other boards or committees. Does anyone have anything tonight? Okay?
Mr. Morris. Sorry, I was muted. Commissioner Morris, I would just like to say that now that school is back in session, the youth commission is openly taking the application for students to participate in that. And I don't have the number of vacancies in front of me, but there are several. So I'm just encouraging any high school students that are interested in applying for the youth commission to go ahead and do so. It's a wonderful program.
Thank you. Any, any other reports? Okay, then we will open the floor for general comments by board members. If anyone has anything, I will mention that early voting has started for our municipal elections throughout the county, so we encourage folks to go out and participate. I think you can find the, the schedule for early voting on our Cabarrus County website. So I encourage everyone to check that out and participate in the process. Any other general comments?
Just wanted to say.
Okay, Commissioner Shu. Okay, Commissioner Shu, go ahead.
I was going to say, on the Central Island Regional Council of Government, we, as early as just last week, voted to approve the regional transportation, the mobility plan, which is going to be phenomenal if we can ever get the funding to take care of it. But it affects 12, a 12-county region to improve mobility for people getting around places, reduce cars and use other public type transportation, which is a huge deal. And then on the Water and Shore Authority, very busy there as well. We're working on an interlocal agreement right now with the municipalities and hopefully that'll be out pretty soon for the town managers, city managers and the county manager to review. And so things is real busy on on my table right now for my liaison positions, those two in particular. And so looking forward to further discussions with both of these organizations.
Thank you. Commissioner Keiger?
Well, I was just going to reiterate what Commissioner Strang said. As the former liaison to the Youth Commission, it is a terrific way for for young high school students to get involved and and learn more about their community, learn more about government and have projects and things that they do together. So I I would strongly encourage anyone interested in those types of things to get involved with the Youth Commission.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other general comments? Okay, if not, we do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters related to pending litigation, economic development, and investigative reports as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A347. Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Honeycutt, a second by Commissioner Shu to go into closed session. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. That motion passes. We'd like to thank everyone for joining us tonight. And we will be back on air on November first for our work session. And so at this time, we are now in closed session. Commissioners, as normal, you'll have to log out and log back in. Thank you.